Call to order, this District of Clearwater, Committee of the Whole, meeting for Tuesday, January 30th at 12:30 PM. Like to, oh, we don't actually do that on this one? Hey, look at that. Are there any late items that anybody would like to add to this agenda? If not, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Moved by Councilor Matheson, seconded by Councilor Frizzle, all those in favor? That passes. Moving on to adoption of the minutes that already happened at the last meeting, I'm suspecting. The, um, oh no, this is for the January 16th one. So, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes of the January 16th, Committee of the Whole? Moved by Councilor Frizzle, seconded by Councilor Bratton, all those in favor? Uh, moving on to item 8.1, we are back under new old business. And we are starting on page 94, which is where the last Committee of the Whole left off.
Just go there up there.
Ready to go? Go ahead, Ms. Klassen.
Mayor and Council, today we have in front of you, in a continuation of the grant and aid program. It'll be for the extra, I call them the extraordinary items, but we haven't seen them before in this program. They usually have been reviewed and made recommendations by the Wellsbury Community Forest Commission. So it's a slightly different process from the year before. We have, I believe, three applications in front of you. They are the Interior Health Authority for the laboratory, the Dr. Helmickin Memorial Hospital Auxiliary for the new x-ray machine, and the Evergreens, Evergreen Acres Senior Housing Society for additional building. For a total of $640,000. I have a resolution prepared on the next slide. If Council wishes to move forward with this.
Discussion, questions of staff? Councilor Sim, are you getting ready to ask a question?
I'll wait.
I like these ones. I am extremely grateful that the Community Forest funds are available to sponsor these things. Having, also sitting on the hospital board, understanding the financial position of Interior Health and their budgeting process with other issues. It's great that this is, normally I would say, I wish Interior Health was funding this, because that's where it belongs, for most purchases like this. But the reality, I think, in this situation is that if we want this stuff, and we want our hospital to be as top-notch as we can make it, I think these purchases are needed at this point in history, at least. Further thoughts from anybody else? Councilor Matheson?
Yeah, I'll just echo your thoughts. My, my thoughts are like yours. I wish Interior Health was in a position or willing to step up to the table and fund their own operations. But having said that, I realize that the hospital is a very key, important part of our community, as well as housing and x-ray machines. It's just, I think we just have to swallow it. We're fortunate to have that money from Wellsbury Community Forest, to distribute to the community, and I think in good faith, it's something we need to do.
Okay, further thoughts, comments? Councilor Sim?
Yeah, just noting, um, did, was there any discussion around what the hospital might need to do in order to receive this x-ray machine?
Yes, my understanding is that it's a $700,000 estimate renovation. So this is, Interior Health is not getting off the hook on this. There's substantial renovation costs related to the x-ray machine, because I believe the whole room, you know, it's a radiation-proof room, so the whole room needs to be renovated to do this. I think less so with the lab equipment, because that is basically a rolling or moving piece of equipment that can just be brought in. Further comments or questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Has there been any, has Interior Health said they were going to do matching or anything of that? And I see there's no matching funds in their application, but I'm curious if something...
So the, the cost of renovating the room, to my understanding, is $300,000 more than the cost of roughly, the estimate that I heard last time on the x-ray machine itself. So, yes, it would be nice if they were matching on the equipment as well, but they are spending more money to make this happen, or almost an equal amount of money if you take the other equipment into account as well. They're making an equal investment to our hospital, and that was contingent on the community coming up with the money for the x-ray machine.
Okay.
That's my understanding anyways. Councilor Sim?
And supplemental to that is that, was there a timeframe that Interior Health gave for those renovations? Because it would be a shame to hold up these funds, only to find that the renovation might be done in a couple of years. Is there any information on what their capital planning would come forward with?
My understanding is that they could go ahead with planning of the renovations pretty quickly. But I still think, the number of one year is still rattling in my head before this thing could be completely in place, because of the fact that they need to have continuity of operations. But I will check with that. I'm actually having a call this afternoon when we're done this with the Chair of the Hospital Board, and I will put that to him. But yeah, we can, we can inquire. But I don't think, I mean, they can still go ahead with the purchase of the equipment, it's just whether or not it's installed right away.
And just in follow-up, would we be writing the check to the Hospital Auxiliary Royal Enland Foundation? Or would it go to Interior Health? And just wondering where, who would be holding our money until that renovation's done? Or how would we proceed?
That would be a question to staff. I mean, I think it's to who applied for the grant, correct?
Yes. What has been the normal practice with the Wellsbury Community Forest Commission is that the project has to be completed. The invoice has to have to be submitted, and we pay for, we pay upon approval of those invoices.
Okay.
That's right, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so that...
I'm not sure if we would put, we would write the check to the auxiliary or to the hospital directly. I would have to check that.
Yeah, because that bends to, I don't, I don't see in the hospital auxiliary's finances that they've got that amount of money. So that's why I'm wondering who we would, who would hold it.
Right, so I think once the purchase of the, yeah, we'll have to discuss that.
Okay, in principle, I think it's...
I think we might be in an exceptional situation here. Mr. Thackery?
I was just going to reiterate, what, what you're saying is that we need to find a vehicle for the funding, and it's probably IH, just given the circumstance, because they would have the ability to hold the money, and it's for their projects anyway, albeit it, it can flow through, so we'll have to check on that. So it's, it's an academic exercise.
So we could approve, approve this conditionally today, instead of, you know, on, on the condition that there is a financial body that can hold this. But I don't necessarily think the normal terms, we do things in the spirit of the Community Forest, but it's not necessary for us to do it to the letter of the Community Forest to make it work. Further, Councilor Bratton?
If this went to Interior Health, I would have reservations, because we don't know that it'll come back to our hospital. If we were to, I would like it to stay within our community if it was given to the hospital auxiliary. Now, I do, and I don't know why this is in my head, but I, I thought they were going to get a GIC to, to be able to put this so that it was in a savings until they needed it, so...
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's an option. You know, I hear your concerns there, I agree with that. I don't want it to go into a general revenue pot, and I'm sure either IHA can find a way to commit to that, or has suggested if they had it in a GIC for a year or something rather. But that's something that we, that you, we could still pass the motion conditionally, and then make sure staff ensures that one of those options are available so that we do have security for passing on this important money.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further thoughts? On positives, getting these done, I know, having talked to some of the staff there, these things are really needed. The, the x-ray machine, my understanding is that they're using the portable machine versus the built-in machine for anything that requires good imaging, because the portable machine is so much newer, that it gives better images. And that, and the, on the lab equipment side, tests are being, test samples are being sent away already, because our equipment is already too far behind modern ability to do some of these things. So having this digitized, modern technology will probably save a job or two in the long run, both on x-ray and lab techs, because we could end up in a situation where they send us the cameras on everything. So, and I think it also makes it much more attractive to medical professionals from across the scope of the hospital to have these things in place, because it says we're keeping up with our hospital as best we can. I think all of those are excellent selling points on this one.
Yes.
Further, anybody?
Only, only to follow up with you is that, from what I understand from different meetings, is that our equipment is so old that even new lab techs are not being trained on it, and don't know how to operate it?
Then it's virtually useless.
Yeah, so I would be quite happy moving forward with the first two recommendations.
Do you want to move the first two recommendations?
I will move the recommendation.
You're going to move it to the...
Ms. Klassen's got the motion up there. The Committee of the Whole recommended Council to direct staff to allocate and disperse funds from the Wellsbury Community Forest Reserve for a one-time grant and aid cash contribution to the amount of $300,000.
Do we need it as two, sorry, just to stop you? Do we need it, it is two separate things, so we'll have to do it...
Yeah, so the first one, I think, was $300,000.
No, $100,000.
Hundred thousand. That's why I needed it up on the big screen, yeah. So $100,000. That would be an eyesight issue. $100,000 to...
Interior Health.
Interior Health. And these funds will be dispensed upon completion of the project and review the supporting financial documentation.
Okay, a second or on that?
Second that.
And further discussion? But this one, the, the way this is written, we don't hand the money over until...
Until it's done.
Until it's done. So I think that's the question you were going to ask. All those in favor? Thank you, that's the first one. Second motion?
Second motion is that the Council, that the Committee of the Whole recommended Council to direct to allocate and dispense funds from the Wellsbury Community Forest Reserve for a one-time grant and aid cash contribution to the amount of $240,000 to the Hospital Auxiliary.
Helmickin Hospital Auxiliary.
Dr. Helmickin Hospital Auxiliary. And I'm going to leave it there, just because we don't understand the dispensation.
Yeah. On the, you know, with the, yeah, yeah, that's good. I think that's good. If we're okay with that, staff, do you need further direction as to how it's dispersed? Or do you need direction that we ask staff to investigate?
Yeah, could, maybe we could put that in there and staff investigate how to disperse the funds, and we'll bring it back to Council and they can decide.
With the contribution to the amount of $240,000 to Dr. Helmickin Hospital Auxiliary, with the notation that staff will investigate the timing that best fits the project.
Okay, cool. Second or on that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council, sorry. Seconded by Council Frizzle. I'm rusty, apparently. Further discussion? This is awesome. All those in favor?
That's great.
Moving on to the next item, which is Evergreen Acres Senior Society. They are asking for...
That's where I'm confused. Can I just say that? Can I ask questions?
Yes.
On the funded request, it's saying they're looking for $2.5 million. But over here, it's saying, in the summary, after talking about the Evergreen Hall, they're talking about, "Thank you for the donation to the project of $300,000", which is what we're seeing up there. But I'm thinking that they might be asking for 2.5. The way I'm reading it...
The second last paragraph, maybe perhaps I'm reading it wrong for...
120.
Very last page.
Yeah. "For this, we are grateful to the Wellsbury Community Forest for this generous donation to this project of 300..." So perhaps that's, maybe they are asking for 1.3.
I think they're asking for 2.5 million.
Or 2.5 million.
So my, my question had been, because it's, regardless of what the amount, it's, it's still substantial. But there hasn't been any documentation to accompany it. It talks about some office and rental space below. I'm wondering if this is an opportunity to invite Evergreen Acres to come to Council, and just present, and just show what their vision is. And it is exciting that they want to start in September 2024, and just look to see, fine-tune some of those details.
Bring up 2024, that's pretty quick.
So we could just table this now to a future meeting, and then ask staff to go back to Evergreen Acres to come forward with the, more clarity on their ask and the presentation to tell us what they are...
With sort of the financial breakdown? Because I also know that in their, in their discussion of it, this isn't for affordable housing, this would be for app market. And it would actually be a revenue generator? So just looking for some, some clarity in how that kind of aligns.
And I'm not exactly clear where, sorry, I'm not exactly clear where they're planning on building there.
Well, it, it sounds like an exciting project, and I think we all would look forward to a presentation.
I absolutely agree, but that we don't have a lot of information...
And it sounds like they've got some architectural plans, and they've done such good work for the community. This is just an opportunity to learn what next steps are.
We would like to talk to them, hear what they have to say.
Okay, so we'll pause this one for now, table this one for now.
Well, maybe we need to make a motion to direct staff to invite, yes.
And then you, we needed, yeah. Would you like, somebody like to make a motion to get staff to invite Evergreen Senior Society, or Wellsbury Senior Society, for a presentation with a more fulsome financial explanation? Articulation of what they want to do. So Councilor Matheson's moving that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Sim. All further discussion? None? I saw that. All those in favor? That, that was a, that was a preemptive yay. There is nothing further on this agenda, so motion to adjourn. There we go, and we adjourned. Hey, that was the best 12 minutes of our life.
105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 155 157 159 161 163 165 167 169 171 173 175 177 179 181 183 185 187 189 191 193 195 197 199 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 599 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 799 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 999 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 599 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 799 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 999 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022
I call this District of Clearwater Regular Council Meeting to order for Tuesday, January 30th, 2024 at 2:00 p.m. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we're fortunate to be gathering today on the unceded, or sorry, on the unceded territory of the Sem people who have been caretakers of this land since time immemorial. Are there any late items to add to the agenda, Councilor Sem?
Just a late item to add to the item regarding the strategic plan.
Okay, so that's the on-table addition. And there is also um, there will be resolutions out of the Horizon Report in camera, which you have on your desk as well.
Yes.
Um, uh, so with the additional items, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move?
Yeah, moved by Councilor Frizzle, seconded by Councilor Matheson. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, moving to item eight point one, minutes of the regular council meeting held January 6th, 2024. There's a recommendation. Any errors or omissions seen or not? Give you half a second to peruse. If not, a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councilor Matheson, seconded by Council Frizzle. Oh, my watch is talking to me. It says I'm supposed to start a council meeting anyways.
Well done.
Thanks. Thanks, Siri. Oh, gosh, I shouldn't say that aloud. Uh, um, if nothing, all those in favor. Thank you. Uh, we have um, item eight point two. Uh, the minutes of the, oh no, item point two, eight point two is actually the Horizon Report from the in, from the... Nope, that's not that.
No, it's just...
Where do we fit? The Horizon Report from the Committee of the Hole. What is that under?
Uh, Your Worship, that'll be under nine point one.
Nine point one, thank you, sorry. Nine point two, we'll call that, sorry. Uh, so, Horizon Report, okay, our recommendations. Um, so, um, eight point two, there's a release, which is in camera Horizon Reports. Uh, item nine point one, minutes to the Committee of the Hole for January 16th. And I got a mover and a seconder on that one. Oh, sorry.
They're just for, to be received.
Just to be received? Okay, thank you. So that's just note that are received, no need to make a motion on that. Item nine point two, there are three recommendations. They can be moved as one. I'm gonna read them out loud. Uh, recommendations from the January 30th, 2024 Committee of the Hole. That the Committee of the Hole recommend to council to direct staff to allocate and dispense funds from the Wells Gray Community Forest Reserve for a one-time grant and aid cash contribution up to the amount of $100,000 to the Interior Health Authority for a laboratory program. These funds will be dispensed upon completion of the project and a review of the supporting financial documentation. The second item is that the Committee of the Hole recommend to council to direct staff to allocate and dispense funds from the Wells Gray Community Forest Reserve for a one-time grant aid cash contribution up to the amount of $240,000 to the Dr. Helmickin Memorial Hospital and that the Committee of the Hole recommend to council to approve staff to investigate the best way, uh, the best method to disperse these funds. And the third item is that the Committee of the Hole recommend to council to direct staff to inviting Evergreen Acres Senior Society for a presentation to council with a more fulsome financial picture on the project that they wish to move forward. Uh, can I get a mover and a seconder on this one? Moved by Councilor Bratton, seconded by Councilor Matheson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor. Thank you. Um, moving on to Mayor's Report would be the next one. I haven't been in this chair in this role for a while, so I did a Mayor's Report for December 2023 and January 2024. Um, took leave beginning December 4th until the New Year, uh, but I did, still did a lot of work behind the scenes in that time. Um, on December 8th, attended an ECBC Grant Session online. Uh, I sit on that many, that committee uh, for the dispersion of ECBC Grants, which is the Economic Trust of the Southern Interior. Um, and they put out a lot of grants. I think we did, uh, oh, camera, it was quite a substantial number of grants. I think it was over fifty and in the hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. Uh, on December 14th, I attended a meeting with Regional MOTI Managers, Argo Road Services at Argo Kamloops Boardroom. Uh, Chief Lamprou, Mayor Stamer, Director Sow were there. Big discussion, talked a lot about highway safety issues. Uh, and now found out in the last day or two that um, we are, uh, we've been invited to a meeting with uh, uh, MOTI Highways Minister, Rob Fleming. Um, and that will be a joint meeting with myself, Mayor Stamer, and Chief Lamprou um, with the minister. Um, also did the Mike Smith Show. I did a bunch of interviews on highway safety in that time. Uh, December 14th was the TNRD Regular Board Meeting. Um, multiple topics, solid waste proposal at Cache Creek, actually put forward by a, a joint collaboration with the First Nations Band. Um, apparently our old Septage Bylaw was still in place at the TNRD, though not here. Um, and then TNRD five-year financial plan was put forward. Um, we had a Committee of the Hole meeting. It's about four hours, three or four hours for them. Uh, fire dispatch communications, which would affect us here. Uh, all the transmitters and radio equipment for fire dispatch needs to be upgraded. Um, we had a overview of the TNRD Parks and Trails Strategy. Uh, TNRD has a lot of park swampland, good stuff. Um, and then the one that would also be of interest to Clearwater is a report on TNRD land assets. So if you want to look at the full report, it is in the December 15th TNRD Committee of the Hole meeting. And it does, it was sparked by all the discussion around town on uh, the um, Camp Two Road TR, TMX property, Trans Mountain property, camp property, and what is the possible use for that? And I, in the council report, I've included the clip from that, so you can see the, the basis of the report. But the, the full report has recommendations on how you could move forward with disposal property and things like that. Um, December 15th, we had the Thompson Regional Hospital Miss, District Meeting. Um, topics were included, the five-year financial plan. And starting, I believe, today, although I haven't seen anything in my mailbox, the Cancer Center Advocacy Campaign, um, which is titled "Cancer Can't Wait." And I will be one of the two spokespeople for that, um, but we're also looking to get um, community spokespeople in the long run, people that are cancer survivors that want to tell their stories as well. Um, January 17th and 19th with another set of TNRD meetings, um, with a one-day training workshop um, uh, for everybody, including the new EA Directors. A lot of talk about what we could do as advocacy and what should be the responsibility of staff. So back to the know-your-role thing. Uh, the 18th was a meeting with the Cancer Center Advocacy Committee, where we discussed what the strategy for moving forward with. That is, um, that is sponsored by the TNRD and it's basically the intent of it is to keep the pressure on the provincial government to make sure that they deliver their plan, on their, their promise to do a Camloops Cancer Center in the next couple of years. Um, the afternoon of the 18th was a TNRD Regular Meeting. Topics included the future of the Litton Library Building. Um, a lot of discussion, a long sort of heated discussion on zoning changes to cabin sizes on Lake Shore Holdings, whether we need to do that or not because of a lot of monster homes starting to show up on um, strata lots on Lake Shore properties, especially around Barrier and Merritt. And a presentation by the Kamloops White Cane Club, which um, had a lot of members um, who showed up and showed us how to use their white canes for um, vision impairment and, and we got all sorts of things like that. Plus, the team, the Thompson Nicola Regional Library now has uh, kids' books in Braille, which was kind of fascinating. Um, and then uh, the 19th was the TNRD Committee of the Hole. Uh, started off with a presentation by RCMP Superintendent Jeff Pelley, talking about um, mostly Kamloops-based enforcement issues, but we did get on to the topic of uh, of rural um, highway patrol, uh, as well as rural crime and drug enforcement and, and the challenges with that. And then uh, this last Wednesday, week ago Wednesday, was Agenda Setting. And in the last week, I've also spoken to the RCMP Commander a couple of times um, on road safety. Obviously, the school incident that's still somewhat ongoing and various citizens' concerns to do with crime issues in town. Uh, moving on, Councilor Bratton.
Silly microphone. So I don't really have a report. I didn't have um, much going on, but I was um, um, approached by a resident and they were asking about um, there's been a lot of random acts of kindness around our, our community and if there was some way we could acknowledge them. And I, really got me thinking and it, because I really liked this idea, but I didn't know how to uh, work around it, so um, I got, working through it anyways. I uh, wondered about a gratitude wall that could possibly be located in our outdated tenure wall, possibly, and we could um, uh, oh, I lost my spot. We could have something similar to the kindness quilt that they did at the school. We have a local author that wrote the kindness quilt book and it would tie into that. And um, people could write on sticky notes, put them up on the gratitude wall. And if they were part of, or saw, or just if they're grateful for something in their life and how it could feel to uplift everybody. And if they need any kind of, I don't know if staff would need support from me or whatever, and we could get the, I think it's grade three class or grade four class that, where that teacher is um, in. And they could do the artwork for it, to uh, build it, and then we could maintain it. I don't know, I might be over speaking, but I would love to support something like that with staff. Talk to Leanne and see what she thought um, within her program. Anyways, uh, I really like the idea of promoting gratitude, kindness, and um, see how we could do something. Uh, and then it might catch on and we'll see more and more, you know, generate throughout the community. So um, uh, that is where my idea was with that.
Okay, so just again, where were you thinking of this could go?
So we have a um, ten-year history wall out there that's five years old.
The ten-year history.
Oh, ten years!
I heard it as tenure.
Oh, sorry! So the... Ten year.
Ten-year history wall out there.
I was just looking and I think it ended in 2020-ish, so I'm just like, you know, it's kind of aged, maybe? Or I don't know if we're adding to it.
Seems like a good location, but yes.
It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be huge either. I do realize we have a daycare in the building, so they may want to play with the sticky notes. That may become a situation, but if...
Them up high enough.
If we put it up higher, and then we would also build a program where it is, we take uh, pictures, put it on social media to build the awareness of our graciousness anyways.
I, I would suggest that you write it out in a paragraph or two for staff, submit it, and bring it back to the next council meeting for a discussion.
Okay.
And uh, that will give time, either, either this next meeting or the one after that, depending on how busy we are. Um, give time to, for staff to consider what might be the issues with that. But that, that's a great idea, I think.
Thank you.
Or things like that. Uh, Councilor Frizzle.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to update you on the, the trail out, out here going towards Triple Decker Falls. That the first bridge is up and completed and working on the second bridge. So that's exciting news that we're moving forward on this project and it's, you know. A lot of the public has been out there to see and taking looks, pictures apparently, so that's good news. Um, I just wanted to um, bring up, I had someone from Interior Health come and speak to me about her growing concern that adults in the community are not addressing their healthcare plans before they become ill or incapacitated. They're going into the hospital, especially older adults, without a representative Agreement Seven or Agreement Nine, which is having someone being able to take care of your financial concerns or your medical concerns while you're ill. And why, if you go into the hospital and you're not well and you can't sign papers, they're trapped. They can't, they're, they really struggle with uh, being able to care for the individual um, the way they should be because they're held back. So it's really important that having a voice, that you have a voice in your decisions about your healthcare treatment. And there um, there is a, a document called My Voice and it's um, your advanced care planning. And if you, especially if you're 50-plus, or your family, or your friend groups, it's a discussion that everyone should have with people in your, in your circle and make sure that it's there. It's um, it's so important that you get your proper care and if you don't have these agreements, you don't have them. It's going to go into the, the newsletter, so people will be able to see it. But um, yeah, check online for um, advanced care planning and you'll find it on, on the government website there. I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of that.
My Voice, Advanced Care Planning.
Advanced Care Planning, My Voice.
On BC?
It's BC Government.
Uh, Councilor Sem?
Uh, so that's such a great reminder. It's really, really important. Um, and I know the, lots of people have utilized this. There used to be hard copies available.
Yes, and it's all online right now, but I'm getting some um, printed out so that I have them on my other roll.
Yeah, it's a tremendous one.
There, yeah, there it is.
I gave it to all my parents as a Christmas gift.
Uh, that, and that's a brilliant idea because it's so important and there's, there's a lot of information in this document. It's a fifty-some-odd-page document. A lot of it's information, but there is, you, you fill out things and you get them signed. And it is telling people what you really want. And, and if you don't express what you want in your end of life, who knows what's gonna happen, so.
Excellent reminder.
That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. That's really interesting. Uh, thing, more things I have to do.
Yeah.
Uh, both Councilor Herring and Councilor McKenzie are both stuck or away for work projects. Councilor Matheson?
I don't have any report this go around.
Thank you, and then Councilor Sem?
Um, thanks very much. I think I just want to start off, first of all, by once again thanking our fire department. Um, you know, there continue to be incidents in the community and we are um, safer and more confident thanks to this incredible group of, of volunteers. And uh, I know that um, the community sleeps easier knowing that uh, they are here for us. So just immense gratitude for that. Um, over the weekend, uh, this community was so much fun, just absolutely so much fun. There was a full blonde spiel, over eighteen teams.
Oh, wow.
Um, took part. Lots and lots of uh, newbies and just so much laughter and great publication and just people had a, a really, really good time. And thanks to social media, it was kind of spread far and wide and it just really presented Clearwater as, as the fun outgoing community. To your point, Councilor Bratton, lots to be grateful for, like so many good things and good people who are making things happen. Uh, same thing over on the hockey side, uh, just a jam-packed back-to-back games. Um, the arena was just packed on Saturday night and there's just really no better joy than, than cheering on kids. Uh, also, I just wanted to um, let everybody know that um, SD73 has been able to now offer a preschool program that's happening at Raft River. It's affordable uh, preschool. Um, it's so reasonably priced. I think it's like less than a hundred dollars um, a month. Um, and uh, the admin team and the staff at Raft River have done a tremendous job getting this going and, and how important those early are, early years are. Uh, so that's good. I also want to thank Councilor Bratton for all her great work at um, the New Year's Party. Uh, the photos that she's been able to put out that she did on a volunteer basis, just reminded people of a night of um, glamour and fun and, and good times. So thank you for, that was a lot of work. Wanted to acknowledge that. I attended a, a health meeting last week and the physicians as well as the hospital administration uh, brought to, brought to light the ongoing challenge of attracting locums. We've had a really good pool of locums, um, but the 24-hour call is proving to be hard, especially for um, aging physicians. There's other communities that have adopted different models. Um, and the same thing for the recruitment of, of nurses and that, although the housing opportunities have eased. Where the hospital and physicians are looking for support is just in different ways to support um, attracting new people. So that might be things like uh, punch cards um, for the new gym. That's, that's one thing that, now having the gym open, congratulations, that is such a, such a benefit to our community and we admire the, the entrepreneur who's taking that on. Uh, but maybe we could discuss at a, a future meeting about where council could support in some of these gentle recruitment um, efforts. I recognize that at the last meeting, uh, there had been the Rural Conference um, application that had come before to council. And it's, it, it's absolutely right, the way council went. That's maybe not our direction, but perhaps in the conversation about how we uh, support recruitment efforts, maybe there's some document, there's some um, advertising material or something, but I'd like to see that on a, on an agenda where we can discuss that more fully about how we can support um, our healthcare workers in this community. Um, and then also still in the spirit with uh, healthcare is SD73 um, in partnership with TRU is launching a health science program and that's going to be held out at NORCAM in Kamloops. And it's going to work very similar to some of the trades programming where there's uh, a selection of health science courses that all lend to supporting kids who may want to explore some careers in healthcare. Uh, and anybody from the rural communities who are interested in that, there is a rural billet program so that kids from our community can actually find billeting opportunities in Kamloops and to attend those courses. There's still ongoing advocacy to try and bring some of that training out to Clearwater. And I'm sure when that's appropriate, council will weigh in on, on some of those advocacies about, you know. And same thing with even education, CEAs and all sorts of uh, great careers uh, that can be partaken locally. Um, and then lastly, uh, I'm hoping that council might put their minds to looking at some of the Community Excellence Awards that are coming out through the BC Government. We have a number of citizens who are just such easy candidates. have a number of citizens who are just such easy candidates and that would uh also include the reconciliation um awards that are being presented by the province. So I um put to all of council and mayor is that let's put our heads together and just uh celebrate some of our uh citizens, I'm just going to keep going with your theme councillor Bratton of just gratitude for for what people offer and contribute, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh any questions on any of that from, thank you for your reports, that was excellent stuff. Um moving on to item sixteen point one, draft strategic plan, there is no recommendation on this, but um we do have the additional uh document provided by councillor Sim on some of her vision for this, which is great, uh to have that on the table. Um we can have a discussion about this though. Um so, we've been working on the strat plan, the strategic plan for quite some time now. Um in the report, which is on page twenty-seven, the agenda, um there is sort of a a basic outline and that sort of lists off the things that sort of should be in there and sort of a basic vision for the district, but um you know, we could always add more to this, we can wordsmith this, where do we want to go? Thoughts, anyone? Okay, so councillor Sim has a document on the table, I mean, I'm pretty good with the basic outline of items on the report on twenty-eight, twenty-nine, et cetera. Um but yes, it could use some color and some refinement. Okay, councillor Sim or councillor Bratton?
Bratton.
You gotta, I do have a question or comment, yeah.
So eh what are we doing? Are we allowed to kind of cut this up and put a few things from uh councillor Sims in there or do, what are we allowed to?
Well, we 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 could go basically line by line and wordsmith it if you want.
Well, I don't.
Or you could ask, you could also take this to another meeting, um that where you all hash it out in a workshop meeting in the future. Um or we could pass, we could even pass it's on the table right now and revise it later, but councillor Sim, go ahead.
Yeah, so just just to reiterate, a- and I'm pretty passionate about the strategic plan and basically in summary uh for the audience is that the strategic plan is a long-term vision for the future of a community that outlines its goals, planned projects to achieve those goals and metrics to determine success. It charts the course for a community over a three to five year period, at the end of which the plan should be reevaluated um and refreshed. And it's a a really important tool, it helps establish a shared vision, prioritize organizational work, serve as a decision-making tool and create clear guidance on the goals of the governing body. Um and so while I think that what's presented on table, I feel that it's eighty percent there, but I wonder if it completely articulates uh the goals and ambitions of council. And if you think back to why you ran as uh for council, does this plan that's on the table fully encapsulate your intentions and what you want to look back at at the end of the term and say, I'm proud that I was a part of a council that did that? For me personally, I think we're eighty percent there and there's a few additions that I'd I'd like to see, um and I feel that they're important because I want to put the community uh really i- in in strong focus, which I think is there, just a little wider on some things, and I want to document that elevates Clearwater to a position of excellence. Uh so I realize that that may involve a little more hashing, as I as I said, we're eighty percent there and I'd like us to get to a hundred percent. Uh with that in mind, um so I would like, I'm gonna, the the notice of motion, uh if anybody would be amiable to supporting it, that council direct staff to organize a comprehensive governance and strategic planning workshop in February twenty twenty-four, to be facilitated by Jason Johnson. Furthermore furthermore, that council consider the adoption of a finalized document at the meeting scheduled for March the fifth, twenty twenty-four. The rationale for the notice of motions is that the workshop will thoroughly explore council's governance role, evaluate council priorities and scrutinize staff work plans for twenty twenty-four, all with the overarching objective of finalizing the strategic plan. Jason Johnson, the consultant, will be responsible for producing the conclusive version of the strategic plan, ensuring it's in alignment with the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh reasons for citing Jason Johnson is he has worked on a consultant basis, is familiar with the district, um and because we've just in my mind have got that twenty percent to go, it would just allow it to be done without sort of burdening um you know, staff for that, noting our our timelines. That's my motion, if anybody was open to seconding it.
Uh you actually don't second a notice of motion, it just goes to the next um meeting.
Goes to the next one, excellent.
Next meeting. Um and you will also need to provide a written copy if you haven't already to
I have provided that.
Excellent, thank you. Uh for staff to make it official for a notice of motion. Um thoughts, discussion on this? Um I'm just, go ahead councillor Sim, or councillor Matheson.
I I'm just curious that you say twenty percent, you're not quite there, can you articulate that a little better, like what sort of uh portion in there you think is missing? Just so I I get a better idea what you're
Yeah, so when I go through what's been what's been presented, what I'm finding is that there's some social components for the community that's not necessarily captured in there, certainly some housing um possibilities that aren't quite there. Um there's also, I just feel in the the report that I did that there's some wider opportunities for collaboration. In the version that's on the table, it mentions uh working in alignment um with our First Nations partner on resource extraction, I wasn't aware that we've come to that part of our relationship, so that to me, it's it that would be where our consultation would be and that's why I cited it that way in the draft that I presented, is because I don't want to speak for um a community that we haven't engaged with on that.
Just uh a matter of point to that, uh I I'm kind of curious too where that uh extraction thing came, was that in our original strategic plan?
No, but it does speak to the fact that in the work that we've been doing since last May, um that it this strategic plan has gone through a variety of hands, and so my point in saying that council maybe needs one last go at it, because this is our vision. And so by having that final session together, we can get it to a hundred percent where we examine um elements that might have been passed through different authors of it, so that we can feel with confidence that this is how we're representing our community, this is our report card and this is how we can articulate all work plans moving forward.
So just through the chair to answer councillor Matheson, uh the comments about uh First Nations stems from the discussion at the November twenty-eighth special council meeting, where there is discussion of advocacy and working in collaboration with First Nations and so forth, and the 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 discussion around resources and re- and mining and forestry and so forth. Thank you.
Okay, uh further comments? I I mean, for me, I, you know, we, council is right in the fact that this has crossed many hands, many times, uh many interpretations and maybe it is a bit too much in the weeds. Um I would support what is going to be suggested in the notice of motion, as long as there's a very solid commitment to finish it that day no matter what and have something that's passable at the next meeting, because we have, you know, we are behind on this. This needs to be a guiding document for future um budgets, for future years of planning. Um I think that's critically important, um but it's also somewhat of a living document that it should be edited as we go along, but if we don't set the basis right, uh when we go three or four months down the road to start the next year's budget process, um we're gonna have to revise it then, we're probably gonna tweak it tweak it then anyways, but we would have to maybe um revise some of the core of it if we were to just move ahead with what we have right now.
And and to that point, that's why I was quite clear about including is that the adoption of a finalized document uh be presented at the March fifth meeting because that's that is the deadline, like your, everything you said is exactly it, this session would just be to make sure that council has an opportunity to really nail it down um the way that we see fit and just to examine some of the components, because we haven't had that chance just yet.
Further discussion, councillor Frizzle.
Just with with that, what you just said, do we need a facilitator or do we just need to sit around as a a council and just hammer it out ourselves?
Um I I did do it in in suggestion with the fact that, you know, doing some governance refresh, um because it's been a long time since we've done some things, not everybody went to Silga, not everybody went to um U B C M. And again, because, you know, our organization has gone through some different transitions, is just to come together as a learning so that we understand that the role of governance and how that that is manifested through the strategic plan. Um from what we've been able to see from Jason, it is his in area, he actually teaches at Camoson College in that one. Um and again, he's familiar with our our community, he's already familiar with some of the challenges that we want to address uh moving forward, um so that that was why.
Yeah, thanks, I just want some clarity.
If I could make a suggestion um on two fronts, uh if council could pass a motion that if you indeed, if you're wanting a facilitator, the sooner the sooner I know the better, um but otherwise it'll be next week, which will be the sixth of February, I believe. And so the February is is a is a tricky month and I don't know the availability, but it certainly, we can certainly do it, it might be the last week of February or the second week of February, um whatever week works for you. The other request I would like to make is, um I'd like direction, I'd like to bring a policy forward to council in terms of keeping the the strategic plan refreshed and keep, put it in a policy, it's very simple, very short, not too long, but it 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 compels that the that the uh plan is is regularly reviewed and especially to councillor Sims' point, the plan does get a complete rewrite at e- at least each term um from top to bottom. And I would encourage you to use a facilitator simply for the fact that it gives everybody an opportunity to to uh participate on the same level, as soon as, as soon as without a facilitator, then somebody has to engage and and sometimes it it becomes a dual role. And from my experience that any, whether it's management teams or councils, it's very helpful to have a facilitator. Thank you.
Hey, um since the councillor Matheson, I'll just go first a little bit.
Uh a couple of comments on this, and I totally hear what councillor Sim has to say about this and and I agree that it's not a hundred percent right now. My my feeling right now is that if we were to take what we have here now and revisit it down the road and we get rid of some of the major obstacles that we're dealing with here with in infrastructure and all the other issues that are in our plate right now, and revisit it down the road, I don't, my feeling, my personal feeling is we do not need a facilitator, I think there's enough intelligence and passion with this group that we should be able to hammer something out between us and get this together and make it our document. Uh that's just my feeling.
Okay, um who wants to go first? Did you have
No, you don't.
Okay councillor Sim, you had a
Yeah, and just following up on what the C A O is, sometimes it it helps to have that person, um you know, who who does it, it is the twenty percent, I can't see this taking long, yes, you're right, there's a lot of articulation. I think what I'm also curious about though, for me, I sometimes, maybe more often, stray into more operational things and so my inexperience with maybe being able to uh separate those is that by having a facilitator, it would ensure that what we're doing is um a vision and not an operational direction.
The right direction.
And and so by having that expert in the room would ensure that we are living up to a level of excellence that I think that we all want to achieve. Um and from what I understand is that Mr. Johnson, you know, this is the work, he's not a very expensive um consultant because he's passionate about the work, uh and so I I think it could be done quite quickly and efficiently and articulate all the things you've just spoken about.
Thoughts or comments? So at this particular, oh sorry, um Mr. Prime?
Yes, worship, I just wanted to clarify on the notice of motion uh procedures and just that um it can be presented at this meeting, uh given if all members of council present at the meeting agrees to waive the requirement for twenty-four hours' notice.
So I was just gonna speak to that, but uh go ahead Ms. Glasson.
Perhaps if council chooses to um bring in a consultant, perhaps they can um how much would be for the budget purposes and what the funding would be.
So I
And include it in the motion.
Yeah, so I mean, I I think we don't know that at this particular point in history. Um so we could, because this, obviously there's a timeframe issue here, um there could be a motion to direct staff um to look into the cost of a consultant for such a thing in the next calendar month.
So in terms of where it would come from, uh it um uh council professional development, I know that for me it's really important and I would forego attendance to any upcoming conferences and sessions um in order to to see this, to see this happen, uh that would include Silga, U B C M, any economic development, anything like that, uh because I I feel it would be a part of our and particularly my professional growth and getting it right of governance versus operation.
Mr. Thackeray.
Yes, I I think that that would be appropriate, is to take it from your P D or your contingency budget is another alternative. Thank you.
Contingency.
Okay, uh councillor Matheson.
Would it be possible to work with this document we have, make a motion forward to adopt it as it is, the one that's been presented, with a recommendation to staff to source out the uh cost and all that stuff of a consultant to come in and work with us in the future to to finish it up? At least we would have something moving forward at this point now, it it's been in the wind for so long that I I just feel that we need something on the books and it's nothing, it it's a living document, it can be changed, and if we could use a facilitation to effect that change down the road, I'm I'm all for it.
Uh councillor Sim.
Uh to to staff, I I currently we don't have a policy that would allow for that, so it would be a strategic plan adopted for how long, like how would that adopt?
So, through the chair, what I think one of your options is to move forward is you can approve the proposed draft in principle and refer it to a date for having a meeting for further deliberations, so that could form part of your, part of your resolution and I could also, you can also add the the uh draft document that councillor Sim has included to form part of the record for that, so that it will be considered and discussed and debated and ultimately decided on at that meeting in February, which I think is your goal. So that would, I think, to tick many boxes. Um and I'm also, I I can also inquire with uh Mr. Johnson if he can be here when he comes up here normally, so it wouldn't be an extra cost at least, and so it would be try and and we do it in a, we can do it in a afternoon, evening, pizza, soup, sandwich kind of thing, if that's, if that is agreeable by suggestion, thank you.
Thank you. Um so what do we want to do?
So by the sounds of it, if if there was an appetite of council to waive, um what was it that you, I'll need a repeat of that, please, Mr. Prime.
Uh yes, councillor Sim, through the chair. Um items six point six one of the council procedure bylaw, a notice of motion may be introduced by member council, either at a meeting only if a written copy of the motion has been delivered to the mayor, presiding member, corporate officer, twenty-four hours before the council meeting, or uh at the council meeting if all members of council present at the meeting agrees to waive the requirement. So those are the two options to introduce a notice of motion, council can choose.
Okay, thank you. So first question, uh at the table before any motion is put forward, um does everybody at the table, are they in favor of waiving the twenty-four hour requirement or the notice of motion uh requirement and do it at this meeting? Okay. Uh yeah, I would like to do, I I don't know if I need an official, do I need an official vote? Okay, so I I'd call a a vote on that, so all in favor?
Do we need a motion and a secondary for that?
Do we need a motion? Do we actually need a motion?
Full motion.
Okay, so what would the full motion be? I'll give you a second there. In fact, um can we just take about a four minute recess, I I seem to be getting a an urgent call from somebody, I just want to check it, so we'll come back at two forty-five, um when uh Mr. Prime has drafted a motion that we can then read.
Oh, cool.
Oh, cool. From a brief intermission. So Mr. Prime, if you have a motion crafted that somebody can move in second, that would be great.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. The motion is that council waive the 24-hour requirement as per section 6612 of the council procedure bylaw for Counselor Sim's January 30, 2024, notice of motion.
Move her in a second round that, please. Moved by Counselor Matheson, somebody else other than Counselor Sim has to second it. Thank you, Counselor Bratton, all those in favor. Now we can move to the actual motion. So what is the actual motion for? We need a motion?
Mr. Prime, do you have the motion there, or would you like me to read it again?
I do have the notice of motion, I can read it again.
Thank you.
That council deferred the approval of the 2024 to 2028 strategic plan and that council directs staff to organize a comprehensive governance and strategic planning workshop in February of 2024 to be facilitated by Jason Johnson. Furthermore, that council considered the adoption of finalized document at the meeting scheduled for March 5, 2024.
Wow.
My only question with that is in conjunction with Ms. Klassen is if you would like reference to where the funding would come from?
And Counselor Sim through, we do have an additional resolution afterwards for that.
So that motion as it stands, does somebody like to move it? Second it by Counselor Bratton for the discussion. All those in favor? I only point is trying to get on a Tuesday, Wednesday, it's a very busy month. And then the last one, Counsel, sorry. My mic's not on, sorry, and the last one, Mr. Prime?
Yes, and so we would just, for council's consideration, an additional resolution that council approves staff to fund the workshop through council contingency and reduce the budget as required.
Okay, I'll move her in a second round that one, please. Moved by Counselor Bratton, seconded by Counselor Frizzle, all those in favor? And that passes, thank you, that was a good discussion. And I look forward to the other one. We are now on item.
Fire Department.
Fire Department, excellent. So we'll wait for Mr. Smith to get his mic back and if there's any questions on that? Okay. Been busy times for both Clearwater and Blackpool. I hear that there was double incident yesterday in Blackpool as well, so. Yeah, so Mr. Smith, go ahead, you have a report here.
Thank you, Worship. Page 53 of the agenda is my report. I just wanted to bring to the attention of council and the public the, how busy we were last year. It's kind of the same as we were the year before. Calls, differences, like the categories were about the same. And that's about it. Some highlights, we recruited five members and two juniors out of that. We had one return to the team. Two reached their response status in their training program, and we welcome the replacement of vacant captain position of Wayne Wazowski to Stephanie Poson.
Thank you, any questions for the fire chief on this? Counselor Bratton first?
Just looking at your summary report, and you had an elevator rescue? Sorry, do we have elevators in Clearwater?
Yes, there's three.
Really?
Yeah, Best Western, the Affordable Housing, and the Sportsplex.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah.
And one other one, you had 10 vehicle fires. Curious. How many, all gas-powered?
Yes, they would have been all gas-powered or transports.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, nothing electric yet.
No, that's what I was like, you know, there's always a debate over, look at all these things. Anyways, that is good to know.
Just a quick comment, I noticed quite a steep increase between 2021 and then to 22, 23. Any particular factor on that, is it just the hot summer?
That was, increased the rate, pay rate for the firefighters in the policy 2101 there? Or the, and the factors of the call amount?
Callouts, yeah. So you went from 64 to 91 in one year, so, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, there was more burning violations reported. First responders and, you know, ambulance assistants went up as well.
Thank you, and I do note that I received a note from Mike Simpson, who facilitates wildfire roundtables for Clearwater, that there is one upcoming. I can't remember the date, but I think it's about a month out into February.
That's correct, yeah.
Trying to get a date together for that. So that's our first one of the year where we do some preseason on discussion with all stakeholders on what we are planning for the next fire season. Counselor Bratton?
I have, maybe, would it possibly be because our population was a lot larger then with the campgrounds and whatnot, possibly?
It may have been a little bit of a factor, but not a 50% increase, no, definitely not. And just one other thing to the mayor's first comment there, yes, it was, it's been a busy January. We've done 11 calls already, and three of them have been fairly significant fires.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. We also had a cold snap in January, which is also another thing, so yes.
Yes.
And my understanding, and maybe you can fill us in a little bit, just because it's interesting, I don't think it's been out there, that Blackpool responded to a trailer fire last night and also did the landing pad for a medevac or something as well, was that what happened?
I kind of heard the details over the radio, you know, they did have a trailer fire on Ferry Road, and then they were doing a medevac as well.
At the same time, so yeah, we have a lot of good people on this in this valley, both ours and the neighboring VFDs, so this is really, that's pretty impressive. Any further questions? If not, receive for information, thank you for your presentation, Chief Smith. And then we move on to bylaws. So first up is 17.1, bylaw number 293, council procedure bylaw number for one, first, second, and third reading. There's two recommendations there. What is the desire of council, or questions first?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind just a couple of clarifying questions to staff if I could. There, in this, in the first bylaw, number 293, deleting in 2.2, deleting 6.4.243 in its entirety and replacing it with 6.424.3 subject to 2.4, the acting mayor shall preside at the committee of the whole meetings. In the next bylaw, it states that the mayor would be presiding at the committee meetings. And I think I'm not understanding how the two documents come together, so I'm wondering if I could get some clarity on that, please.
Another thing I noted in this, I believe in the bylaw, it actually says that we've been doing it incorrectly, that it is actually, when the acting mayor is unavailable, it's actually the month forward who is supposed to.
Oh, it's a month forward.
Instead, we've been going one month back. Anyways, do we have an answer on that, or would you like to come back to that at a future time?
Yeah, Counselor Sim through the chair, through Mayor of Blackwell. I feel like I just need clarification on the question.
So to really make it really simple is, is, who is chairing the committee of the whole meeting?
According to this amending bylaw, it would be proposing that the acting mayor is.
And then is that confirmed in the second one? And I can find that, so we can go through this one first, because that answers it, and then make sure that that aligns with the second bylaw. And I think it does, but I'm not sure, so just making sure that there.
Which second bylaw?
There's no, there's only one bylaw, there's a consolidated bylaw for reference, and that's just for convenience.
Okay, so that would help me understand, that's what I'm trying to marry together, so it's both in here.
Yes.
Right? And so one says that the mayor would chair the committee of the whole, and the other one says that the acting mayor would. So I, that's what I was trying to understand with the two bylaws together, so I appreciate this opportunity.
Yeah, it's, hey, we worked that out, excellent, thank you. So there are two recommendations there. What is the desire of council for moving a recommendation? And they are on page seven, page three of your agenda, 17.1. First one is that council procedure bylaw number 268, amendment bylaw number 293, 2024, be introduced and read for a first and second time.
Your Worship, just, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Prime, do you have a?
I just wanted to confirm for council's sake that as per the community charter, this was posted with two weeks' notice, it was posted in the newspaper and online.
So we could go to the second recommendation?
Just for any amendments to the council procedure bylaw, you do need public notice? So I just wanted to make council aware of that.
Okay. So did somebody like to move in second?
I'll move that.
Moved by Counselor Frizzle, seconded by Counselor Matheson. Further discussion? If not, I will read the bylaw for the first and second time. District of Clearwater bylaw number 293, 2024, a bylaw to amend the District of Clearwater council procedures, bylaw number 268, 2022. Whereas, section 137 of the community charter provides that the power to adopt a bylaw includes the power to amend or repeal it. And whereas the council of the District of Clearwater wishes to amend the District of Clearwater council procedure bylaw number 268, 2022. Now therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the council procedure bylaw number 268, amendment bylaw number 293, 2024. All those in favor? Okay, that passes for recommendation one. There is a second recommendation.
For one and two.
For a third reading, somebody wished to move that? Moved by Counselor Bratton, seconded by Counselor Matheson. District of Clearwater bylaw number 293, 2024, a bylaw to amend District of Clearwater council procedure, bylaw number 268, 2022. Whereas, section 137 of the community charter provides that the power to adopt a bylaw includes the power to amend or repeal it. And whereas the council of the District of Clearwater wishes to amend the District of Clearwater council procedure bylaw number 268, 2022. Now therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the council procedure bylaw number 268, amendment bylaw number 293, 2024. All those in favor? Thank you, excellent, that's good cleanup of that. We are moving on to item 17.2, draft bylaw number 294, emergency program committee amendments. That is also on your table. Any questions of staff while I'm digging out the actual page? Counselor Sim?
So I think that this is really good, that we're getting ahead of the emergency management, and I appreciate the fact that we're developing a structure. It's definitely a priority of council and staff, so we're fortunate in that. What I wasn't seeing in reading through, and maybe you could help me understand it, is in the preparations, is will there be an inclusion of how a community might evacuate? So we've seen, you know, internationally, there's been various situations where a town doesn't necessarily have notice. I think that with the discussions around drought that are in, you know, in and among the community, we know that we have some fire risks. What happens if we evacuate? And will that be something that will come to the committee sooner than later?
Any staff response on that? Go ahead, Mr. Thackeray.
So as you're aware, Bill 31 was given real estate December and is now law, and the provincial government is going through a six-month process seeking input and drafting regulations which will implement much of the new legislation on B C emergency management. It's a wholesale change, transformation, there's a lot of good things in it, but there's also a lot of very complicated things in it, and it will cost money, and I simply don't know how much it's going to cost. One of our initiatives that we've undertaken at management is we are working with the T N R D, and we are going to be conducting an educational session on the 27th of February, as well as a tabletop exercise. We have been in direct discussions with them about evacuations and what that means. One of our initiatives that you'll see coming forward next week is a new initiative for putting some redundancy in the primary E O C and the backup E O C. One has power and unreliable internet, the other has internet and no power currently. So for us to be able to function and be operational should a, should a incident come up in the next six to nine months, we need to be able to function. You're aware that we do have infrastructure on order, it is coming, but we still need to have the redundancy regardless of that, because there's just, there simply isn't enough redundancy in our E M program. So we are building a more robust program. A lot of the initiatives, we still simply don't know how it's going to pan out for us. And so it, we're waiting to see what comes down from the province to be sure there's going to be a lot more demand, a lot more downloading on municipalities. The province has kindly given us a $40,000 grant specifically for First Nations E M engagement. That's a work in progress. And we also anticipate that we will be doing at least a tabletop and/or some orientation exercises around evacuations. So it is a, it certainly is top of mind, and it's absolutely vital. The new legislation is very directive, and it mandates municipalities to do a lot more than they ever have before. And that's going to put a strain on all municipalities in the province, whether you're the big ones or even the small ones. Thank you.
So supplemental to that. And I appreciate that there is going to be a greater demand. I'm looking specifically at 5.3, the emergency program committee, and then there's a list of responsibilities. What I didn't see in there was reference to developing an evacuation plan that would be ready for the community. Unless it was the intention of this document that it would be under item F, developing and implementing the emergency program and plans as directed by council.
So my understanding, their standard that they, there be an evacuation plan.
Yes, we have an evacuation plan in our emergency program plan, so there is actually a draft plan there.
Okay, so that will be coming forward to council?
Generally doesn't, but.
No, but the new, the new, the new E M framework, the. Well, no, but the new, the new, the new, the new E M framework that the province is mandating, i- it will compel these documents to be re- be reviewed and refreshed where necessary, so um, it's absolutely top of mind for us, because we, we live in a bowl, and it hasn't burned here for a very long time.
Uh, Mr. Prime, and I believe uh, Mr. Smith is gonna show you the document there. Um, I, I think this is something that if you, yeah, if, if you want to read through it or have a review of it and ask questions of staff, these things already exist, um, they, they've been a requirement for quite a long time. But yeah, you know, this, this is talking about upping the game here, and it is a large conversation across the province right now with municipalities. Uh, to all the points that uh, Mr. Thackeray said, I'll let Mr. Prime just pop his
Sorry.
Comment in there right now, and then I'll continue, Mr. Prime.
Thank you, your worship, and uh, through the chair to councillor Sim. Um, yeah, count, this did, the emergency plan did come to council for approval uh last year, uh, but was reviewed and was adopted by council. That would be the case again, if um, you know, there will be new regulations coming down, and until we see those, we don't know how drastically this E M plan is going to have to change, and likely it will have to change drastically. Uh, that will be up to the committee and anybody in an E P C position, uh, if that gets filled, to, you know, really sort of take charge of that, and then it will be, come back to council at the end of the day as well, anyway. But there is a plan currently in place, it's not that we don't have a plan, we do, um, this was updated from a, you know, previous evacuation plan that had been drafted in two thousand and nine and not really updated since then. Does that answer your?
Yeah, i- I, be, again, because it's new legislation, it's understanding it, and then articulating that plan out to the community, so although we have an evacuation plan, has that been something that the community is aware of? So, in Ukulit, they know when the big, you know, sirens go, that means something. Um, so it's great having a plan, but it's, it's something that maybe the community needs to be a part of in the event, uh, noting that we are in the Fishbowl and it is very dry. And how did it fit into this bylaw, and it was just clarification, but it sounds like it's well in hand.
Mr. Thackeray?
It's one of the reasons why we need some redundancy in our, in our communication systems, um, because in order to um, to activate a, a notice through, through the phones, to, to give people information, we need to have a functional E O C in operations. So this is one of, this is one of the keystone things, and this is why we need to do what we need to do. Um, and certainly, we would very much top of mind to come back to council and, or, and do a, do a session in the spring um, with the committee and with council, just so you have some awareness and orientation. And as we said, and, and as my, my colleague said, uh, we simply don't know what the province is going to do. Uh, reading the legislation, it could go a lot of different ways, and we see a lot of things um happening, and we just don't know what they are.
And, and I'm sorry, I'll just, I'll just, yeah. So this, yeah, once again, this is a big conversation across the province, um, some of the southern communities, I, I sent a note to council um, that uh, they're actually already in drought planning for this calendar year. Uh, we do have the base plan, the, the plan that we were working off of right now, which is the existing one that was based on hundred-year-old emergency management legislation that's just been updated. Uh, we do, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, um, and my council reporter after that, uh, Mike Simpson, who used to be Fraser Basin Council, but is doing our wildfire roundtable, a lot of emergency management discussions has there, because the stakeholders are regional on that, not just from our local team here, it involves T N R D and it involves Ministry of Forests, so uh, there is a lot of conversation, uh, the tabletop exercises on that have, actually, both that and our own have included things like evacuation of Upper Clearwater. What about, I think, a past one, and uh, Chief Smith can uh correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was a, a fire on the west side of Clearwater. An interface fire on the west side of Clearwater that we, yeah, uh, we've also done the chemical one on the bridge. So a lot of these scenarios get run uh on a regular basis and updates are made to it, so um, yeah, getting that communicated out to the public, we have these conversations. That's how, that's somehow we do it, but um, my point being, other than saying that all these things are going on, one of the reasons I really wanted to get the strategic plan off the deck is because I feel this is pretty much, this uh in relation, in addition to fire smarting, I think is basically one of the biggest things we need to work on in the next few months. It is going to be, if we have a repeat of anything near the last two summers, this is all we're gonna be thinking about this summer, and we need to know exactly what we're doing and get as much resources uh and planning in place, um, and leave as much room for staff to be able to uh pivot when needed, um, but also, as Mr. Thackeray and others have pointed out, uh, that we have the proper communications, the proper trained staff to run E O C, uh, a- and everything else that's, that's in place, including, you know, we're talking, uh, Mr. Thackeray a little to the backup power coming for uh, well, one, three, that hopefully will be in place by this summer, but that is one backup power, um, if that goes down or we have another incident, do we need a, need to think about sourcing a second generator for here? What are the contingencies for the contingencies in some senses, so um, that's sort of my comment, that I think we really need to make space um, both for staff and for ourselves to have a big discussion on this, because we are going to need to deal with this, if it's not this year, next year, or the year after that. Uh, further thoughts or comments? Oh, okay, uh, we do have a bylaw in front of you, um, I don't know if it was moved or seconded, was it moved and seconded? Not yet, okay, would somebody like to um move recommendation one, uh, that this be adopted? Uh, moved by councillor Matheson, seconded by councillor Bratton, thank you. Uh, District of Clearwater bylaw number uh two nine four twenty twenty four. Um, a bylaw to amend the District of Clearwater Emergency Program bylaw number two six one twenty twenty two, whereas section one thirty seven of the community charter provides that the power to adopt a bylaw includes the power to amend or repeal it, and whereas the council of the District of Clearwater wishes to amend the District of Clearwater Emergency Program bylaw number two six one twenty twenty two. Now therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the emergency uh plot, program bylaw number two six one, amendment bylaw number two nine four twenty twenty four, all those in favor? Oh, sorry?
You said to adopt, and this is only first and second reading?
No, this is adopt.
Is it?
Um, seventeen point two.
Okay, then.
I'm, I'm correct, this is adopt, right?
Yes, your worship.
The, this is item
That are adopt?
This is seventeen point two.
Cause that's what I'm seeing here.
On the, on the um, on the agenda, but maybe it's not in the report?
Yeah, that, okay, that's fine, oh yeah, it says that there, but it doesn't say that.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you, and that is adopted, uh, and then moving on to uh, draft bylaw number two nine five, border variance. And this is on page
No, those are all wrong.
One twenty seven? Uh, somebody wish to just explain this, but we haven't had a border variance before, so somebody from staff wishes to speak to this at all, or we just move to adopt? Uh, Mr. Prime?
Uh, yes, your worship, thank you. Um, so the board of variance is a legislative requirement, uh, any municipality that has a zoning bylaw is required to have a board of variance. Um, it hasn't been done to date, and the District of Clearwater has had a zoning bylaw for, you know, since incorporation. So this is just cleaning that up a bit, and um, it is a uh bit of a standard, you know, some of the terms of the board of variance are standard across the province, and, you know, mandated to have three uh on the, the board for a municipality our size, uh, as well as, you know, some of the remainers, they may not end up meeting frequently at all, it may be one every couple of years, but it is required nonetheless. And primarily, this is to bring some of those development variances, such as, you know, that, the kitchen, second kitchen one, that may not necessarily, um, you know,
Full public hearing?
Need a full council here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, so basically trying to make it easy for people doing uh minor zoning issues and things like second kitchens and twenty-five centimeter, too wider, high garages and things like that, it could potentially go to the, the board of variance. Okay, we still have quorum, um, is there a mover and a seconder for this? Moved by councillor Frizzle, seconded by councillor Matheson, District of Clearwater bylaw number two nine five twenty twenty four. A bylaw to establish a board of variance, whereas the council of the District of Clearwater has adopted a zoning bylaw, and whereas the local government act provides that where a council has adopted a zoning bylaw, there sh- there shall be established by bylaw a board of variance, and whereas the local government act provides uh that in a bylaw establishing a board of variance, there shall be set out the procedures to be followed by the board of variance, including the matter in which appeals are to be brought to the board of variance, and how notices of applications to the board of areas are given, are to be given. And now therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles hereby and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as District of Clearwater Board of Variants bylaw number two nine five twenty twenty four, all those in favor? And that is adopted.
That's good.
That's a lot of board of variance.
That is words. Okay, so, uh, we move on to item eighteen point eight, we move on to item eighteen point one. Uh, District of Ni- uh, Nanaimo, uh, Regional District, um, there's a set of letters there, um, and I do believe, I can't remember if I attended this session at U B C M. So it says response required, but what is exactly the response that is required of us on this one?
That's what I was wondering.
Your worship, it, I feel like it's a bit of a misnomer, it's more response requested as opposed to required, I feel.
Okay, requested. So I can, I think for all of you, we could just leave this, uh, you have it for your information, maybe read through it, you, you have a council meeting in a week. Um, if there's something in there that you decide to spur, it spurs you to action, um, it is a lot of information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you could bring it forward at the next council meeting as, as an action item, right, councillor Sim, if you have
Actually, a lot of this, if we, if we move forward as part of what we talked about in the um, our motion, will be covered under our governance structure as well.
There you go.
Like for feedback too, so I think that that marries in quite nicely.
Good point.
Yeah, I am, I chaired a session at U B C M on regional districts, um, how they work, um, for um, versus a local government at municipality, and my comment at the end of it was like, it was walking into a house, opening a door, and you're seeing a completely different house on the other side of that door. Uh, there's so many different, little differences in, in uh legislation for local governments, uh, even between the regional districts and um municipalities. Okay, eighteen point one, there is no correspondence, information only, we dealt with the notice of motion earlier, uh, comments for the public? We do go public consultation, but it's generally not, it's um, yeah, does the public get input on the emergency plan, generally not, go ahead?
That would be done when the plan is before council, or they can, the public can always send in comments and
Yeah.
And suggestions, but the, the twenty-seventh is, is actually a wor- it's a training session.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's um, E M training, thank you.
Yeah, so there's also community stakeholders, like the community forests, the fire departments, uh, B C ambulance, all sorts of people generally are in the room. Um, so there's other ways for community outside of local government to participate, so. Yeah. Yeah. Communications is a big deal, um, I do note that in the Fraser Canyon, N L has dropped its transmitters now, or is intending to drop its transmitters, so that is, that's already on a lot of people's minds, um, we may be at some point, we, we do have the um, the Voyant Alert, which doesn't reach everybody, um, but there's always been a problem with Tallas uh cell towers jamming up during emergencies or busy periods. Um, so there are, th- th- those are the kind of discussions that need to be had, because there has to be extra layers of communications, it can't just be fire department driving around with bullhorns or doing door knocks and things like that, because there's a lot going on when we start getting into these situations, so. Yeah, I wish we had a radio station like Barrier with its own power supply, I think that would be a great future move. Councillor Matheson?
Just a, a quick question, maybe somebody can answer it, uh, are, is our system wired into the local radio club, the amateur radio club? I know Kevin Deckert has got a lot of stuff that's going, and I, I know Warehouser had the repeaters up here for a while, and they were maintained, but now they're down, uh, which is limiting a lot of communication.
Uh, Mr. Prime, if you'd like to comment from your knowledge?
Yes, uh, councillor Matheson, through uh, your worship, um, I'm actually a member of the local radio club and an amateur radio operator as well. Um, and we do have quite an extensive repeater network that's um, links all the way through to Kamloops, the emergency pre-op there, as well as through to the Caribou, up through to Prince George, so they are a very uh, you know, essential asset to our communications in, in the district, so. They are a part of our E M plan, and they will, will be um, likely on the committee as well.
Oh, good.
Okay, thank you, uh, further questions from the public?
Just one more question on those lines, if I could, uh, I know talking with the people up in the Upper Clearwater, uh, they've been able to phone service up there now for three weeks?
It should have been restored.
Down?
No, it's, it, my last thing talking to residents, I, I took that one to Tallas through uh Megan Chadwick, who's been our local um, our, our Tallas community contact, who has actually now moved on to the provincial government out of Tallas, and, and we now have a new one, um, his name is uh, uh, last name is Crookshank. Um, my understanding is, as of last Monday, that was restored, um, it may have failed again, but they were replacing two boxes up there, but on the larger note of that, uh, I know both directors Granié and Director Zhao uh, from the T N R D want to do advocacy, pretty uh forceful advocacy with uh Tallas, to talk about um cell repeaters up the valley uh for there, and then uh, uh, Director Granié is actually based out of Sabanau, so he's talking north of Kamloops Lake. That's like moving a mountain.
Mm-hmm.
But, when they do get going with those, I think it's important that as a council, we join on.
Yep.
Advocacy efforts, and, and we've been doing that for years, I mean, we've been advocating for a tower that reaches into the park and a, and a better cell phone tower for Clearwater with backup power. But I think at this point, it's also worth taking that to the provincial government, um, and, and saying, this is something you need to fund to make it happen, and not rely on the telecom companies alone. Okay, uh, further questions from the public?
If we have questions, it's happening
Yep. Yeah. You can either send them to me, or you can send them to staff, um. Okay. Uh, do you have an email address that you prefer to use, I mean, mine is mblackwell@docbc. I can get you a card, yeah, I'll get you a card.
And your worship, a- admin@docbc.ca is the best first stop, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Whoever it needs to be, so staff, yourself, or somebody at the front desk will look, keep track of that, I get emails. Uh, depends on what the topic is, um, but yeah, generally, things are responded to relatively quickly, but um, you know, maybe touch base with staff. So. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're gonna take an intermission after this, if you want to bring it straight to staff today, uh, we're gonna, we need to do a, a ten-minute intermission after we finish this meeting. Um, you can, you can bring it to staff right now while we reset um for the in-camera meeting. Anything further from the public? Okay, thank you for coming, um, we do need to move into in-camera. Uh, we will take a five-minute recess, or ten-minute recess after I read this out and it's moved, but uh, there's a recommendation that the meeting be closed, the public presented to sections ninety-one of the community tar- charter to discuss matters relating to A, personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position as an officer, employee, or agent of the municipality, or another position appointed by the municipality, G, litigation or potential litigation affecting the municipality, I, the receipt of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, J, information that is prohibited, or information that if it were presented in a document would be prohibited.